Oh. Consistency is a good thing.
Absolutely.
Meeting call to order. Today is Tuesday, May 2nd. It is now 6:05 PM. Town Council, acting as a sewer commission, public hearing number two for fiscal year 24 proposed budget.
Full call, Council President Goslin.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Here.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Councilman O'Charney.
Here.
Councilman Bojek.
Here.
Participating communities, Town of Coventry, Town of Situate, City of Cranston, City of Warwick, Town of West Warren. There is a quorum on record, and Council President.
All right. Who wants to stop?
I don't think anyone wants to hear me for the third time, so I'll defer to Jeff.
All right. Good evening, Council.
He doesn't hear me, right?
Yep.
So after public hearing number one, we're going to focus on a budget on the proposed rate increase from $4.25 per 100 cubic feet to $4.65. The budget is already lean, and we have to address significant issues like aging infrastructure, chemicals, and sludge removal. Here's some statistics we have put together about the rate increase. The average user will see an increase of $24 per year. A minimum user will see an increase of $16 per year. And a large apartment complex in town would have an increase of $4,710 per year. This budget will enable the facility to partially offset an emergency repair, and it would also allow us to be proactive with our maintenance needs. A major repair, a major factor is that the facility needs to be prepared to potentially accept significant federal funding, which we're going to have to match a percentage of those funds. We have upcoming projects over the next five years that are estimated around $7 million, which we can no longer delay. The facility has to be responsible stewards and managers of the funds and tasks entrusted to us. We can no longer neglect critical infrastructure improvements. That's all I have. Open for questions.
Any questions for Jeff?
I noticed that a lot of the bonds that we currently have are going to be gone in the next five to six years. That seems like a pretty good source of income that will be coming in. So again, I wasn't here last week, but I did listen to the meeting. Dave made a lot of the points that I was going to bring up is the $30 increase one time compared to the $24. Impotuity.
Average user.
You know, yeah, going on forever. I just don't see how that correlates one to the other. So with those bonds falling off, I think even that 1% increase is too much. I would, I do agree there has to be some type of an increase because everything, all the chemicals, everything you use, they're all getting more expensive. Fuel is going to get more expensive. Salaries keep going up. They never go down. You know, we understand all that. But at the same time, fuel is more expensive for everybody else out there. You know, food getting more expensive, everything's just going higher, and most of their salaries probably are not going up. So I would rather try and keep it as low as possible and not do the whole 1%. And just see how it moves forward and then, you know, tackle it again as the years go on if we need to. But with the bonds falling off, or if you get the federal grants, and we don't have to do that, then I think it's better for the ratepayers.
Okay.
Federal grants, though, do have, they have a share. So if we get our, we've applied for $2.5 million.
A little more. Leave three and a half. We end up applying for three and a half, Councilman.
So we would have to pay, I mean, so that's somewhere between 500 and 700,000. We're going to have to come up.
That's for infrastructure.
And I understand that. That's what I'm saying. I see where we need some type of an increase. But at the same time, I don't think we should do the full 1% because they're only asking for $30. As a one time, and that would have made them okay. Then that $24 every year doesn't make, like, it goes way above and beyond that.
So I think actually the discussion, and I'm sorry, I'll jump in, the discussion last week was, that was the original thought to avoid having an increase. And as, as the new numbers came in, because as, if you recall, we didn't have the revenue numbers, we weren't sure where they were. And Tony did more work. It became obvious that that might be okay for the one year. But the reality is we need more than that. So that's why that became, I think we talked about not the preferential method, go to the $30, which was $40, I think, when first proposed.
Right. And I did hear all that last week, but again, I still think that that 1% is too high, even with the adjusted numbers. I still think it's too high. I'm just putting my thoughts out there.
What is a 1% increase? What is that? So if we have a 1% increase, what is, what is?
It's close because it's, it goes from 425 to 465, so it's about 40 cents. So yes, that's.
If we, we're going to have a.
So it's not 1%, though.
So what are you talking, what are you talking as far as a percentage increase?
It's about the 425 to 465, Councilman, would be about nine and a half percent.
Right.
Nine and a half. Somebody grow 1% the other day, that's why.
A nine and a half percent increase.
That number stuck in my head. Actually, the email that you sent, I think that was the, they had the 1%.
If I put a 1% in there, I apologize. That was a typo if I did that.
It's under, it's just under 10.
So a nine and a half percent increase, what does that bring in per revenue roughly?
The, if, I'm sorry, the nine and a half percent increase reference, that would bring in $488,640 at the next fiscal year.
And where would that money go?
That, that money would go to be, to partially offset that emergency repair, which the, the tab at, right now at that stands at 556,000 without final paving. If we have to pay for final paving, there's going to be an additional cost above and beyond that. So that 488, 640 would allow us to recoup the majority of that emergency repair. But also knowing that that's in the rate and it's, it's going forward, it begins to set up the facility to begin addressing the funding for these future projects that we're going to have to undertake. We, I think, the superintendent and I have spoken, and I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I think our, our overall goal is to borrow the least amount as possible and avoid bond interest. So we're trying to get to that point.
So what does that fund? If everything goes nine and a half percent, brings in 488 or so, what does that fund go up to? Where does that stand at that point?
So as of right now, was it one, about 1.8 million?
The unrestricted funds as of right now was 1.8, so it put us in the 2.2, 2.5.
About 2.3.
Two and a half range.
Okay. So looking forward, okay, this happens. What happens if we have another pro, another problem that incurs, and it's another $500,000?
So that's what the fund is for.
No, I understand.
For, so.
So, right.
But if you're saying we just want to use the 500,000, for example, then we went from 2.3 back down to 1.8 again.
No, I understand.
No, I'm sorry.
So what happens then? Are you going to jump in and say we need another nine and a half percent?
It's, it's unfortunately, it's an issue we'd have to address when we get to it. Part, one of, one of the line items in the budget this year is we ask for an increase in line maintenance. As the superintendent's mentioned at the budget workshop, and I think at last week as well. It's, we've kind of been over the years more reactive, and we want to get proactive. So that's why we wanted, we asked for the additional funding and line maintenance. So we can have the guys go out there, take a look around, potentially identify these issues before, before we get to that point of the emergency repair. So our hope is the long term, we, it's to say it's cheaper repairs, so we're not paying emergency repair pricing.
I think there was some discussion, and I'm not sure which one of you guys talked about it. So this is about a $600,000 event we had on Water Street, which is a fairly short stretch of.
About 300 feet, yeah, around there.
And if that were to be.
So the 300 feet cost, just for easy numbers, about 600,000. We have about 2,500 feet remaining in that line that is in decent shape, but needs to be repaired. We've repaired the remaining 2,500 feet for about a million dollars right now. So the cost of doing a fix and being proactive about it, instead of paying 600,000 for a small section, it just, for us in the long run, will be cost effective.
And just reiterate one thing, and Jayden, I know you said if this increase, whatever increase it may be, if it's just say $400,000. The reason why I was against the one time is because now you're not getting that $500,000 every year. So ultimately, whatever the increase we agree upon, it's going to be yielding. It's not going to, we don't have to increase it. I mean, there might be other things. But if they put a line item, 400,000 or whatever it is to go into that restricted fund, well, they're getting that 400,000 next year already because it's already in the increase of this year. I mean, obviously budgets change and things will change. Costs may arise. Who knows? Costs might go down. Who knows, right? But I, I've seen it with, with some of the.
It's possible.
With some of the.
It's possible.
Well, some are possible.
Some of the chemicals, I've seen it go back and forth. I mean, I've been here a few times where I have heard we lowered the cost of the chemicals. So you just don't know. Right now, it might be an all time high, but I know fertilizer, everything's through the roof. I mean, grass seed, you name it, it's all there. So I'm sure, you know, if they restrict that money strictly for that item, it should be there every year. So if they spend 500,000, they're going to recoup 400,000 next year. So, you know, I was just against the one time because of the fact, we tell the taxpayers, it's one time. And then you do have to come back for another, another $10,000 and say, I thought it was one time.
Well, again, and it would have been one time for Water Street repair.
But again, that's not how the taxpayer takes that. They say it's one time.
And that was the discussion last week is, I think the group forced, and I realized that that was probably not the best approach to take, and that we are in a situation where it's starting to get critical that this work needs to be done. And Mr. Jeremiah will tell us that he tells us every meeting, we really have to do some of this work. We really have to do some of this work. So.
Now, the only other question I have, just to clarify, Tim, Mark, and Tony, and Jeff. We have a cap on our budget to raise a percentage. Is there a cap on the sewer budget to raise? So in other words, we, our levy is basically 4.25, right? Yes.
For the enterprise zone downtown, which was a true facility, I don't believe so. We can check that out.
I just don't, you're sitting here talking 9%. I mean, remember that money that they have can't be utilized by the municipality. So back, way back when, when we were sitting on nine, 10 million dollars in the reserve emergency fund, and the town required money, the town couldn't grab any of that. So they're separate and distinct. I don't believe that the 4% does capture what they're looking for, but like I said, we can check that out.
I, I don't think so. And if, if it does, we have an issue because it went up by more than 4% last year.
That's right.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
So whatever, if there is an increase, are you going to guarantee that that money that's coming in, whatever this increase is, is going to go into that cash reserve account?
They will barring an unforeseen emergency.
I, I would disagree with that. I mean, there are, there are other costs associated. The entire amount is not going to go into, it will help to offset some. It's not all going to go into. I mean, our sludge removal, I think, is 108,000 more now than it, than it was last year if we didn't have to go. So that's a quarter of that almost. So I, I, I would disagree.
I would like it to, but.
If you're looking to raise the rate, I mean, I understand what you're saying, to be proactive. I'm fully for that. But I'm also looking at, if being proactive means to put this money in, in this account for emergencies. So if it's going to go up 488, and you're going to take 200 off the bat to do something else with it, I'm, I'm not for that. I'm ready to put this back into that fund and increase that fund.
And that is ultimately the goal. And what they've done to, it's a balanced budget. Remember, it has to be a balanced budget. So there is no money that say it's going definitely into that, that bottom line. I don't believe we will have to pick or not do some capital items if indeed something else should come up. So.
I'm just not looking for this to go to, to go to salaries and to go to, to other things.
I don't believe that was the intention that we have set up for it.
Well, I try to make sure. I mean, you're looking for us to vote on it. If your overtime budget is over by 100,000, that you're not going to dip into this, this fund.
Our goal would not be to do that. That, that I can tell Councilman O'Charney, that's, that's not our intent or our plan at all. It, it's to, again, recover that partial repair and move forward to replenish the fund so we can start paying for these projects. That is not our intent. That is not our goal. I think it, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we, every month, we, we bring the overtime to the commission within my monthly report. We, we've acknowledged that we're probably going to run a little bit over on overtime this year. But we're on a personnel line items as a whole, we're going to finish about 70,000 on the budget. So.
I'm just using that as an example.
And no, and I think that was a great example. So we're looking to bound, when we're going over in one line item, we're looking to balance it off somewhere else. We're trying our best to.
I, I just didn't, to say guaranteed that it's going into that fund, I think that would be foolish for anybody to make that guarantee.
It would be a little difficult because we're, right now, we're going to take that out of our savings account this year. So.
Correct.
We want to be proactive and trying to, and work hard on our daily operations to be able to put some money back in next year. And obviously, years after, because we said we've already kind of beat up that we have significant infrastructure needs that we want to do, and we want to be aggressive with alternative funding other than ratepayers and, and bonds as much as we can. So we want to make sure that we're really doing our due diligence to take advantage of those opportunities at minimum expense to our ratepayers. And essentially our taxpayers, too.
Something crazy were to happen and Synergy were not to be in operation all year, that entire amount would wind up going to the landfill. So, so to say we would guarantee that.
All, all I'm looking to is not, just making sure that you're asking the taxpayers again for another rate increase. We asked for one last year. So I'm a taxpayer, too. We're all taxpayers up here. I just want to make sure that money is going to a place where you're not coming back saying, all right, now we're short another 500,000. What do we do? When we're already earmarking that money for them.
So the increase last year.
Things happen.
The increase last year was indeed to help grow that and not dip into, for the first time in a long time, into our reserve fund. That was the first time in many, many years we didn't dip into it. It wasn't put into our budget. So when Water Street happened, that wiped that right out.
Right.
So, so we're, we're actually behind where we would be with the rate increase we had last year. Because our, our surplus is lower. Because we are paying 600, 580, whatever, 65,000 with, with another 30 or so for paving. When we get to that.
Tony, how much, when all these, these four bonds fall off in the next six years, five years, or three of them, one, six years? How much is that saving the sewer department to have to pay out, like, each year? Roughly, I'm not looking for a solid number.
Off, off the top of my head, Councilman, it would be a loose ballpark. Based on what we're paying for bonds now, trying to think what we're paying for. It would be a couple of million.
Couple million.
I wouldn't want, it wouldn't be near five. So I don't want, but I, I can, I can get you a solid number tomorrow morning.
Okay.
If you want to send it to the council.
I should have asked you that, but.
No, it's, I should have had the answer for you. I apologize. I'll have it for you in the morning.
Because, I mean, that's, that's a decent amount of money. And again, that's why I don't see the 9% increase being necessary for this year. You know, we did have an increase last year. I don't see that we have to do the full 9% this year. I would, I would like to see, you know, knock it down in half personally. Because it's, that's something that just keeps going on. We don't, it's like taxes. We don't ever bring taxes down. We don't ever bring sewer rates down, and it just doesn't happen. You know, when taxes go down in this town, it's only because your evaluation went up. But you're still paying, usually, most people end up paying more each year for their taxes anyway, even if the rate goes down. But it's, it's not the same with the sewer. Once that rate hits a certain spot, chances of going backwards is slim to none. So I would rather see a less, lesser increase personally.
My only concern with that, Councilman, is let's just say bonds start dropping off. Council four years from now says, well, it dropped off, take it off our, take it off your rate, take it off your debt services. We don't want to have that on there. We don't know what the future holds for that. I'd rather have the rate increase now just to set us up for the, for the future, not gambling on the future. Not gambling, but just, okay.
That, that rate increase, you sent us some information earlier for the last meeting. That rate increase from 425 to 465.
Yes.
Is, actually keeps us in the bottom four in the state, I believe.
Bottom two.
Bottom two.
Even with the rate increase last year, we went from number four lowest rate in the state to second lowest rate in the state.
I would still like to know if we're going to do comparisons of other communities, what's their overall cost of living in each community as well? I mean, that's just one little snapshot, but what's the rest of it? And, you know, I have to take that into account also for West Waller, because that's who I represent.
So I will say this. I do have one property that has cesspool, pump it every 14 to 16 months. It's gone up 95 dollars since the last time I pumped it. So I.
Actually, mine has two, more than that.
And some of it has to do with where they have to dispose of it in Cranston. Their dumping fees cost more, too, so.
Like I said, I get that.
Because I asked the same, I asked that question. I'm like, what happened? I use you every, I mean, he's like, my cost went up, fuel went up, everything went up, so. I get.
Ends up on the end user all the time. We know that, right? Right. I get we need an increase. I don't dispute that at all. I just, I think that the full amount is too much for the ratepayers after the increase last year. And there's nothing that says, you know, talk about gambling on the future. I mean, there's nothing to say, you're not going to, even if you get your 4% this, your 9% this year, you're not going to come back next year. They say we need more, you know?
I would suggest there's a high likelihood we, we would have to come back and, they would have to come back and ask for more.
Even with the full increase this year?
No, not with the full, but with a half of it, I would, I would think it would be almost impossible not to. And if, again, if we are fortunate enough to get the federal grants that we get, we're going to have to come up with minimum half a million dollars. So that's a. I don't want anybody to think that if there's an increase this year, it will, it will make it that we don't have to have one next year. That's the, the condition that we're in, the million dollars just to do the line down on the Providence Street there. There's Maisy Quinn. I mean, it has to be done all over the town. And, and unfortunately, we haven't done the prevent and preventative maintenance that we've had, we should have been doing.
It's something that's evident everywhere in most communities, not just with sewer, but with water, with, with what happened at Ekon Street, you know?
So I have a question for you.
Yes.
I brought this up many times, like six years. The admin fees. Why do we need the HR director, the town manager, and the finance director so much? Because those are the big three where a lot of that money goes. I'm not saying you're not needed. I'm not saying you're not doing your job. But we have a superintendent, assistant superintendent, and a, I don't know your title, Tony. I apologize. Office manager?
Director of administration.
Thank you.
Just Tony's fine, though, Councilman.
But, but we have three, three capable administration, you know, and it, you know, and I was tough on you when you first started. And I'll be the first one to say, I like your budget. I think it's, it's good. It's descriptive. I don't like the increase. That has nothing to do with you. So but I think we have three capable people here, and when we're utilizing another entity so much at the tune of, I don't know, 400,000 or so?
Was it 368?
360 change, yeah.
It's quite a bit. So do we, do we need that? At 20% of his time and 30% of her time?
So I'll field it from the administrative level. I think we all understand. We, we understand that you don't like the admin fees, or at least the formula there. I, I think we're all aware that that's a common practice in the business world or industry where a sub-organization requires services from a parent organization, if, if you will. So that's standard. So the, the debate becomes the, the percentage, or what's the target amount that you're looking for, if that's the angle that you're going with?
No, I'm not, it's not negative. If you.
Right, so.
If you're spending 20% of your time.
Right.
Dealing with a sewer, then, which is big organization, but fire is a big department, police is a big department, public works is a big department, just as big as sewer. So I don't like to use the word assume, but if you're talking these big departments, 20, 20, 20, and 20, when do you find time to be the town manager? Again, and I'm serious, I'm, I'm serious.
I understand.
I know, I don't know what you do, as far as, I know you, you're, you're everywhere. I know that. And I'm thinking, you know.
Right. So I think the debate comes down to what's the appropriate number? And I think it's, it's up to this panel. We're making a recommendation. 20 appears to be the standard. It, it gets us to an area that they're comfortable in expenses, where the town on the other side is, is comfortable with the revenue. You know, if, if we ran a, a historical number or actually kept track somehow, and we wanted to adjust that up or down in either direction, then that's something we could do. But to sort of find a, a comfort level formula, if you will, that's kind of where it stands. I mean, I think we'll, the management team here will flex it and handle it, no matter which way it goes. But I think the, you know, the, the old total oversight, it's, it's hard to quantify and put a number on it. I, I struggle with trying to figure out a, a percentage. But obviously, it's a volatile industry. Bad things can happen. That doesn't necessarily equate to me having to physically do anything. But there is a significant investment in, in, in time and chatting and worry, if you will. That all goes well, or when it doesn't go well, to be able to respond appropriately. So I think we, we can always struggle with that number. And if we, if it wants to change, we're fine with that. But it's a, it's a sub-organization. They require billing assistance. They require HR assistance.
I agree. I know. And I'm not saying that you're not.
This line, I'm sorry to cut you guys off, but this line item has a double edged sword.
Correct.
And it's a double edged by many ways. You actually could say it's quadruple sword, because if you raise the rate, you raise the admin fees to us, right? He has to raise his rates to cover his admin fees. Now, if we raised his admin fees to a million dollars, that's great for us, because now we just took the, the burden off the taxpayer, because that's more revenue for us. The worst thing you want to do is lower his admin fees, because at that point, we have to figure out in our budget where to get the reduced.
I understand that, but, but the number is the number.
But it, it is a number. And again, and I don't disagree.
Number in a chart.
Everybody's payroll is going up and everything else, then the admin fee should follow that. Say if we get a 3% increase across the board, it should be a 3% increase of the admin fees. But again, he's now coming to us for 9%. He's going to ask 9. whatever. He's going to ask us for 10% to cover his admin. So it's, it's, it's.
Right, but the number is the number, though. I'm not arguing with that. We have a chart. I didn't produce. The chart came to me. The chart says, I'm going to use Mark as an example, because he's easy, 20%. Do you use Mark for 20% of, of his week, which is one day a week, every week for 52 weeks, one solid day? I know it's broken up. I don't think you do. I'm sorry. But if you do, and if you do, then there's something wrong on, on the sewer end.
Again, I think we're, we're never going to come to a finalized formula that is going to be a magic answer. I mean, it, it's just not possible. Again, I, I don't like it when we use the, the 20% and say that management's not doing their job or is incapable, because I think that's inflammatory. And if there is substance to that accusation, this isn't the forum for it. So if it's one of those things where the council wants to vote and change the percentage, we're going to deal with it. We'll live with it. I think essentially it's in, in your hands. We put the, the teams put together, and it's probably been a long historical number. It's been that way. We haven't decided or recommended changing it. But if, but the council wants to change it.
What I think Jay's saying is, we're going to vote on a budget. The numbers in the budget should be accurate numbers. Like, we're, we're voting, again, we'll pick on you because you're there. We're voting for your salary. It's an actual number. We know what that salary is. We can't change that number in there anyway to say, okay, we're going to move this over here, so it doesn't look like that much over there. You know, and so when you, when you don't, when you're just putting percentages and with a rough guesstimate of what it is, it's not, it's not actual numbers. So I think he's saying is, if we're going to vote on something, we need to be completely transparent and say, these are the actual numbers. So.
Right. I, I understand that. I'm just saying, what if? And again, I think you'd need a historical, I, I'd have to do actually a historical thing to say, you know, I come, come back at appropriate time and say, you know what? In, in reality, I spend 16.5% of my time. And then you, you can adjust the admin fees to 16.5 instead of 20, but.
You mentioned how other parent companies do it, you know, business practice and everything else. I'm not in business, so I could be wrong on this, but I would assume, you know, it's kind of like with Tim with us. He does work, he sends a bill. These are the hours I spent on this, this case. Something that maybe you guys can do for, for tracking over this next year, just to see what it actually is.
Man, I'm sure I can do some accurate tracking, but I'll, I'll defer to the, the council vice president, who has the corporate experience in, in Oregon Zanichin that dealt with administrative fees.
I mean, that, that is not how it's done. It's, once a year, you take a look at it, and I believe that it was done again this year, Kristen. And when you made the adjustments up and down, up because salaries were going up, and I can't remember what you took down. Oh, the health, that's right. So, so those numbers went down, and it was such a, a small increase that was required based on the actual formulas. She decided, made it a very, not to change it. So not to put them behind the, well, to have to ask for that to be covered. So that calculation is done once a year, typically reviewed, and.
But the percentage of time is what the question is, is how much percentage of time is actually being done, so the numbers actual, rather than just saying eh. Rather than just saying, eh, we'll go with twenty percent, you know, that's what I think.
I, I don't think that anybody just said, eh, we'll go with twenty percent. I think there was some estimation done. Jay, you make a very good point. We have the police and we have a fire. Those entities are entities unto themselves that probably don't require as much time of the town manager. Correct me if I'm wrong, than other entities like the sewer plant. I, I think that. You talk about twenty percent of his time. It, that doesn't mean he's down there managing or handling management issues there. I mean.
Time is time.
The, the. Three and a half million dollars worth of. Federal grants, the researching that's done, that was done to do that. He helped initially. That's part of his job as the town manager, quite honestly.
I'm, I'm just, all I'm saying is we're talking about big numbers here.
Yeah.
And you're asking for a rate increase, which I understand why. And it makes sense. I don't agree with the whole thing, but it, it is what it is. It makes sense. But then we're going back to this big number. How can we shave that down? So he was a town manager last.
But the way that I look at it, I don't know how many positions there are in that calculation, that formula, but if we had to condense all those jobs. We'd probably be paying a lot more than the three hundred sixty six thousand between salaries, health insurance and possible pension payments. So that three sixty six to me at the end of the day, looks like a good number to pay out for all the services that are provided under that umbrella.
I would agree. If you had to have an HR person, if you had to have some, someone to do that other work to do the, the.
I'm not saying we hire new people.
I, I know that, but that's what.
Is time.
But that's what this replaces.
This is an accurate amount of time that we're actually need them for. The same people we have now. Thirty percent of HR's time, we cut it down to twenty percent. If you weren't asking for a rate increase, it wouldn't make a, make a big deal or not, but, but you are, so.
So, so when that comes off, and I know you understand this, that comes onto our budget. So our rate increase is no longer one point six.
But it's, right, it's a number, but it's a number. We know what the number is. So we can work with that number. I understand it comes, it goes to the town budget. And then we have to work on our.
We, we would not be able to put the budget forward. I get that. Yes. So that can't change tonight. That number can't change because it changes our budget. So that can't happen.
And that's why I was looking maybe to. The billing thing over the next year. Without actually like paying it in because of the next year's budget, but just so we get a little bit more accurate. Among the time that is actually spent there. Just as a suggestion.
Yes, Jim. You may.
I just. I'm not sure that everybody realizes this. I'm sure you don't, but the, all the budget, regardless of the numbers. It is shared by the regional communities. So if they represent ten, fifteen, twenty percent of the flow. They're paying ten to twenty percent of that. I just want you to understand. Where that money is being spread, not only by the individual West Fork users, by all of the users. So. It, it's just a way of translating administrative costs. I'll call it town administrative cost. To where it belongs to the various users. And that's all it is. I mean, that's part of it. I mean, I've been on Jason with, Jason and I have been on this side for years. When it first was developed. It was just a number. It is memorialized much better than it was, believe me, when I first started this. This was, what was the budget missing? And this is what we're gonna take out of sewer and exactly that way.
And that's what it was. And Kristen, Kristen actually went through a whole. To come up with the numbers and the formulas that are in there now.
Wha- whatever it is, and I'm, and I'm not justified, you know, I'm not here to justify the number. I just want you to understand. That if you take it out of the budget and goes to your budget, that's what's not being paid by the users. The other users from Warwick Coventry and others. And that's important that they pay the corporate, a portion of your, what I'll call the corporate share. Um, and this number in relative budgets that I see with like South Kingston and others that have regional communities. It is low. Just, it's, it's lower than those others. Again, you can't compare. I just wanna, in relative terms. That a bottom line of the budget and what the administrative costs. They don't do anything like this. I'm gonna tell you that. They just, it's a plug in number. But I, I just wanted everybody to understand that. I apologize.
To Jay, to Jason's credit, you asked for the detail and the work was done. I know you don't like the number, but the work was done. I, a, and. Again, why there is no increase this year, I think it was because it was such a small increase. The decision was made not to burden the sewer plant with that, that increase because there was, there were fluctuations, increases and, and decreases. But it is looked at every single year.
Any other questions? Any public comment on the sewer?
Good evening, Tom Oates, Colonial Way. This, uh, I think Mary Beth, you called it a buffer, a fund. I, I, you may have discussed, I just didn't pick it up. Former councilman Padula always bragged about this, I believe he called it the rainy day fund. And he always said there was like seven or eight million dollars in the fund that all the different communities. Are responsible for, and it was described as a catastrophic failure fund not to be used. Tim, did you, uh, say that that was up to nine to ten million? Is that the same fund? Years ago, where, where does that stand now? Ballpark, that fund.
It's one point eight million dollars.
So that's significantly decreased and that was used for catastrophic failure as it was.
So Tom, let me, let me clarify a little bit on that one.
Thank you.
One of the things that was done over the years. And it was highly suggested not to be done by many people, including department heads who were running at the time. Was using that money to offset budget. And when I say offset budget. Meaning I don't want a tax increase. We're not raising it. We're not raising it. And we did it for about eight to ten years in a row. And guess what? Slowly drained that account.
I thought that.
Every time something came up as, didn't have to be catastrophic. It could be just an emergency repair. Money came out of there. When you say catastrophic. Just remember, emergency repair. Everything became an emergency repair over ten years, which ultimately drained that account. So again, poor, poor decisions, poor management ended up being, and when I say poor decisions, poor management. It was, I, I would say I'd blame it on the council. Because the council said no tax increase, no taxing, no increase in the sewer. Everybody said, okay, the chairman of the board says no increase, no increase. We'll go with it. It was coming from somewhere. Now here we are paying the.
And, and we actually as a council had the foresight last year to, for the very first time in many, many years. Not take any money out of that fund to make our, our budget balanced. That was the very first time. Unfortunately. We did that with an increase and then we had a six hundred thousand dollar catastrophic. I would put it in that category. Break on Water Street, it's gonna cost us six hundred thousand dollars. So that is, it's, it's one point eight now. I have no idea when it was those big numbers that you're talking about. I mean, that has to be.
It was three, it was over three million. I, I can honestly say when he was, his last year here. He kept bringing up three million, three million, three million. So believe it or not, it's only down one point two from where he was here. So. I don't ever recall seeing ten million in there. But I, I can say honestly, the number three million sticks in my head because he sat here and he kept bringing up the question. Where's the three million? Where's the three million?
I re, I remember that as seven, seven to eight, but that's a huge difference. But I do remember that. Where's the money? Where's the money? And not supposed to be used. But that was my question. That's the same fund we're talking.
That's exactly the same fund. And that's the concern that we're on the brink of having a real problem if we have a, a major break. Whether it's on Providence Street or, uh, in, in Ward four or five. Yeah.
Mary Beth, you brought up the ten million dollar question. A few minutes ago.
What was that?
Deer in the headlights.
I have no idea what, yeah.
The preventive maintenance. We are, we haven't done preventive maintenance.
Exactly right.
Why? Thank you. Can anybody answer that as I?
Because we did not have the funds to do it because we did never wanted to raise rates so to actually have the money in the budget. To do the preventative maintenance. And that's the, that's what we're struggling with now. That's where we are now. It's time to.
Pay the piper.
Bite the bullet and do what we need to do. Yes.
Well, I, I do have a question because earlier when.
Thank you.
Tim was asked a question. He had said that. The, the way I understood it anyway was that it would be unlawful to take money out of that account to plug in holes in the municipal budget. But yet we're doing it anyway.
No, 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 not in the municipal budget, the sewer.
Sewer operational budget.
No, no. So let, let me clarify Wolfgang Bauer, Wolfgang Bauer, Wolfgang Bauer is the one who implemented this fee. But at the time, it was never a set fee. It was always. A different amount every single year.
You guys are just saying that the council.
This is before my time, by the way.
Right. But you guys are just saying that the council, instead of having a tax in, increase, we take money out of the sewer fund. It's, that's what I heard you guys say.
Out of a rate increase for the sewer plant. There were no rate increases for the sewer plant. The money was taken out of the rainy day fund instead.
You got two different things going on here. He's, he's got actually, what he's talking about was what Jim said.
Yes.
He came up here and said there was no set rate. They used to plug the budget with it. So in other words. The sewer department, and I, I don't know the numbers of what, what year. I'm just gonna say if, if Wolfgang Bauer brought a budget before the council. He said the admin fees are sixty thousand dollars. That's what it is. Now next year, he says the budget needs eighty thousand. It's eighty thousand. In today's day and age, the way Kristen and previous finance directors are doing it, they're plugging a direct dollar amount. Based upon, you know, the usage and whatever else. So it's done a little much better than what it ever is because if anything. It's not just plug and play, you know, it's just, we're gonna figure it out. At least we know what the dollar amount is every year.
I'm gonna have to re-listen to this later.
So with all, with all the developments coming in, in condos, do we, as for either one of you guys. Does that benefit the sewer department at all? I mean, obviously they're gonna be paying the rates, but does that help increase the money towards this fund in any way at all?
Let's say we must talk about sewer assessments. As the properties are developed and they're assessed, as that revenue comes in, it, it will be of assistance to us.
However, that is also over many years. That's not a, a big bang. That's a, that comes in over a very long period.
It's twenty years. And you know, constantly we've got a lot of development going on.
Yeah.
Not many were ready to be assessed this July. Maybe by, I think off the top of my head, I think. It was about maybe third, with all the condo units, about thirty units that are ready to go.
Where does that money go? Where does that money go?
Everything flows to the, everything flows to the bottom line. So it's, it's revenue versus expenses at the end of the year. Everything flows to that bottom line.
Some, and some people do pay it upfront, but many do take advantage of paying it over time, which would be a twenty year payback.
Right.
So that doesn't really have a big bang for us. No.
Mark, I know you said you want to go back and listen, but I know what you're talking about. And I know Tim said that it's unlawful to take and plug your budget. Like right now, if we needed a million dollars for our budget, we can't go sit there and say, Jeff, we need another million. So now we need one point three million to plug our budget. That's illegal. But whereas a set rate for an admin fee of three hundred sixty thousand, we can't sit there now and say, Jeff, we don't, you know, we don't want to raise taxes. One point five, seven, five. We want to hit, Jeff, we need the one point seven, five from you. We're gonna get it from you. We're not.
When Tom asked the question, where the seven, eight million dollars go, it was said, I think by you, that councils of the past, and you even said it was the council's fault.
It was their own budget.
So it was for our operating expenses and unforeseen emergencies. The way it came out, at least in my ears, was.
No.
No, no.
The sewer budget.
Their budget themselves. So in other words.
Like I said, I saw it back and listened to it.
That's why I said, emergency, when you said, when I corrected Tom, a catastrophic to emergency, it came out of the, everything they fixed became an emergency. When they didn't have the money. And, and Jim stood up here along with other department heads. Bernie himself said, don't do this, don't do this. You need to raise rates. And he even had arguments down at the sewer department. With the board saying, let's not, we need to raise rates. And he was told he's not raising rates.
So, so we had the luxury for many years of not having. Any catastrophic, but we use that money. To fix other things or buy the broken down truck or, and over the years that went from, and I don't remember. Being a seven million dollar number or ten or whatever these numbers are, but it's now at one point eight. That's what it comes down to. So there were no rate increases. I, that's why rate increases versus tax increase. Tax increases on, on the municipal side. On the sewer side, it's a rate increase. For many years, we didn't have one. We had one last year. In hopes of, of building. And you asked the question last year. I don't understand. And we explained and you absolutely agreed that for the first time, we weren't gonna build into our budget. That's like you, you don't build your budget at home, taking it out of your savings.
Completely agree with all that. And I, I agree with trying to build that up. But again, I just think that with everything getting tough for everybody all the way around. I know twelve dollars over the course of a year probably doesn't really much, have much of an impact, but it's. You know, twelve dollars from this and ten dollars from that and fifty dollars from the other thing. And it all adds up over time. So.
I see Jim, his feet are moving. He's, he gets, I can tell.
I just want to address the long term. Okay. Because I, I sent the memo to the council. Uh, with expenditures. I just want you to know a couple of things. And you're gonna make your decision and I'm just trying to explain things. First, um, the, what we call the lower Maisy Quinn, or the line from where it broke all the way to the treatment plant. It's right now, we can fix it for a little over a million dollars. You let it go any longer than two to three years, it's going to be six hu, uh, two hundred, three hundred dollars a foot to do that. We have a U, an ultraviolet disinfection, which is part of our permit process. No longer supported by the manufacturer. We're going on eBay to get spare parts. There's going to be a come a time. That this is no longer going to be there and it's over a million plus dollars. So if you can. The, the, I always preach and you can, I've been here long enough to say that. I always thought it was very important to build that reserve because it's much better to take, if it's a million, let's just take a million dollars round numbers. Well, a portion of that goes to your regional partners. So now you're at seven hundred and fifty, just a number, or approximate number. Now you can take it out of your reserve. It still be whole, but you're at such a low rate or you're, you have over a hundred million dollars of equipment. And infrastructure here. And you've got a two million dollars, less than two million dollars of reserve. You got a pump station that pumps all the flow from Coventry on up. That one of the check valves have failed. We're, we're running it. We got two other pumps, but at some point in time, the other check valve is gonna fail. And you're gonna have to replace that. That's what this goal is. It's not today. And as Jason said, what we're trying to do is build up that reserve. The goal is to put it away and build that reserve. We preached that for, as long as I've been doing this. Is to build up this reserve because you're, you're. I'm telling you, and you ask why we weren't doing any maintenance. Every year in the budget, if you look back on previous budgets, there was line cleaning. That line cleaning was always in that budget. Guess what? Last seven years, it hasn't been done once. Why? Because that's the first thing to go. Uh, in the budget. So I'm just. It, it's important. I've, I've been doing this for this community too long. And, and I don't want to say, you know. And it was never seven or eight million. It was in the three to five million dollar range. I was here when Wolfgang imposed and it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I can tell you exactly what that number was that I argued about. Because I've always worked on the sewers. It's always been the sewers for me. And, and so I, I just want to stress that. I, I'm just, you know, Jeff is knowing and he's, he, he's got a good budget. It's one of the best budgets I've seen in a long time. Um, and it, and it focuses on long term. And the reason you, we were doing good is because remember, over the last ten years. We've had all new equipment.
As I was saying, two thousand and ten, we had the floods down there. FEMA did not pay for everything. And I know this is before your time, but Jim, you know.
FEMA.
I know FEMA didn't pay for everything and we had to pay for a lot of it too.
There was over thirteen million dollars. Fortunately, the insurance paid ten, FEMA paid one, and the town paid the balance. And that's when you got your upgrade. A lot of things were repaired then. But now with thirteen years later into a systems that have. A life expectancy of five to ten years, we're already on the other side of that curve. If it wasn't for FEMA. This, these repairs would have been, uh, and the floods, floods had a benefit. I mean, it, it was a major improvement, upgrade to a lot of those things. You would have been doing this ten years ago. So I, I just, that's the importance of it. Whether the final number, whatever the final number is, I just wanna emphasize that because that's, it's very important um, to, to look at the future, and yes, bonds will come due, um, and the regional partners will pay their share. Um, but it's important to share, you know, to not have to bond it. I, we, I worked for many communities, and there was one, we had, it would have been a fifty dollar rate, uh, seventy-five dollar rate increase projected in three years. What the commission did at that point was it had twenty-five dollar increases every three, uh, for every three years. When the rate came due to pay back the new bond, it was all technical, no rate increase. That's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to establish a base and move forward.
And I, and I don't disagree with that at all. I definitely don't, if we could pay it outright and not have to go to bond and pay interest, it's even better. I mean, I get all that. But how much you, how much was the increase last year?
Well, yeah, that's.
The rate increase.
Thirteen percent.
Thirteen percent. Now it's gonna be another nine percent.
Yep.
You know, and what's it gonna be next year?
But had it been done over ten years.
You know, and I get that, I get that, but I just think it's too much all at once, and that's just my bottom line. I understand all the other stuff, and I completely agree with all the other stuff, but the rate payers also have their own bills they have to pay.
As far as the budget goes, what I've looked at, it, it makes sense to me, alright? I just have a couple of questions. The regional partners, what's their percentage in paying for any of this?
Percentage of usage, I think.
Yeah, it's probably twenty-five percent, thirty percent, something twenty-seven.
The regional partners pay the same as the West Park.
Oh yeah, it's the same rate that they pay, yes.
No, but I mean, what's the percentage of dollars from the other communities?
In, in bond payments, like Coventry is about twenty-three percent of the bond payments. So all those bond payments that you had, you counted, whether it be Citigroup, they pay a percentage. I know Coventry's around twenty-three, Big Warrick's three percent, West Greenwich is about seven, something in that range.
As far as.
You were close, Jim. You're pretty accurate there.
So we're getting revenue from the other towns for the usage, I get that. What, do they have any liability of, we have a catastrophic?
Yes, they will pay their share.
Because the numbers that you have, one point eight, one point six, is, that's nothing.
That's right.
That, that's nothing. You could blow that tomorrow morning. And as a sewer commission, like, you know, we're paying for the sins of the past, which we do a lot around here, alright? Are you dedicated to get this up so that we don't wind up?
That is, that, that is.
One major break and that whole budget's gone. I mean, that whole.
Not only is the budget gone, it, it will alter to the town.
Yeah.
We'll get back into it, it was pay to, pay to, they do.
Pay to, do from, whatever they are, yeah.
Money to pay the bill either.
That would be to, to do from, yeah.
Now, those are some of my concerns. The administrative fees and stuff, I, I get that. But the other towns are contributing towards those?
Yes, yes, they pay, they pay their share.
You know, you're Robin Peter to pay Paul, that's all. You take, instead of one entity paying the bill, the other entity's paying the bill.
So I applaud.
Typical.
I applaud these gentlemen for actually, uh, under the direction of, of the town manager, finding ways, knowing that we're, we're in that one, one critical breakaway from being in big trouble. Which is why we've gone to our federal delegations to get some money. And I, I'm hopeful that we will get some. We won't get the seven million, but if we can get a couple million, it goes a long way to help us get to where we need to be. So we know, we recognize that we need other sources, and we will go back as many times as we can to the well to get that money from the federal government. But that's also not, we won't see that money for a year, maybe eighteen months.
Long term spreadsheet, which is. Budgets are budgets, you can, anybody can balance a budget if you put it from one end to the other at all. As long as the numbers add up on both columns.
That's how it works.
You know, whether it works or not is another story. And as far as through the last three years of speaking to a lot of people in, in the state, a lot of our problems, I think they're gonna be getting funding, is we need to show accountability for our own town, to our state senators, to our state reps, even on the federal side. Because I know this firsthand by hearing it come out of people's mouths, they don't think West Warwick floats too good. So having nothing against you, we're always paying for the sins of the past, but would be nice if we could say that we are accountable and just, you know, like the maintenance stuff that you were talking about, you know, cleaning out pipes. He said that that's, why don't we spend the money to clean out the pipes? Knowing that you're gonna have this problem down the road costing you a hundred times more maybe.
Because most governments kick the can down the road. Whether it's a.
Yeah, I know, but.
Town council, city council, a state situation, a federal situation, they all kick the can down the road. Just look at our national debt.
And your, your thing with the, with the increase, I get that a hundred percent. One of my concerns is being in business, okay? We, we do a lot of our own what you're doing right now. Um, interest rates are killing us. They're gonna hit us with another one. Alright, came out yesterday, they're hitting us with another one.
Call them to eight percent.
Yeah, okay. At what point is it gonna break if this council, alright, because I'm, that's for worry about this town, doesn't almost use a microscope to look at our dollars? Because our taxes went up, okay? Our sewer's gonna have to go up, and I understand that. Operational, you're gonna get money from somewhere. But you also gotta manage and be accountable for where it goes. And like I said, I'm not, this is just a general discussion. I'm not saying anybody's doing anything, but you know, it really has to be run like a business. And sometimes I don't, it doesn't.
Well, I would, I would agree with you, John, and I think over the last four or five years, there's been a great deal of work done. Again, four or five years ago, our surplus number was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a, as a town.
I know.
And we have worked very hard to get it to something that, not, not, not where it needs to be. It's not where it needs to be. But there was a lot of work done by, by department heads, by the town manager, by the finance director, to actually make those improvements with very minimal increases in our tax rate over the last several years. Now we had the revow, which caused havoc with some people.
Even at that, I'm gonna be honest.
It's right.
Just a shell game.
That's correct, well.
I mean, so when I give the taxpayers an increase, an increase in your value, that's a tax increase. It's just under a different umbrella, you know. I used to go to circus and watch the guy play with the shells all the time.
Do you ever win that game? Yeah.
No, you don't win, just like we're not winning. And one other question, as far as private sewer pumps. Okay? Couple of them I know failed. Who pays for the inspections, and when are they inspected?
Well, there, my understanding is there are twenty-two private pumps.
Twenty-two or twenty-three was the last number I heard.
Um, in the town, and I will let you, I'll defer to, and I don't see Josh here, but Jeff or.
There's twenty-two that we're building currently. They pay a, a fee established by the council, they pay us a thousand dollars a year for that. Mister Rose inspects those, inspects those pumps. Uh, excuse me, pump stations, sorry.
So.
And does that happen every year?
Should be, yes.
Okay. Okay. Alright.
What if somebody just says, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pay? Or I'm not gonna.
Actually, they do. They, they have all paid it. That hasn't been, but the issue is getting it inspected, and allowing us to inspect it is more of the issue.
But don't you have to? I mean, as a town or as.
That's a discussion for another day, yes.
To inspect them, whether they want to or not.
Right.
Yeah, really, I mean.
So.
If you won't let me inspect your pump, that's wrong. Call me when you wanna shit.
Okay, that's one way to say it, yeah. I do know you.
I'm not very politically correct. But I mean, that's just another way of enforcement.
So that is.
We enforce what we have. You won't have people.
And, and letters have gone out to every, my understanding is, and Jim, please correct me, that you have sent letters to. They're not all out yet, okay. Well, it's.
It's been very difficult because it's private, it's been very difficult. We are making progress. It's important with the O and M, it's not the responsibility to go lead, to fix or maintain them. Critical item is, if that pump fails, good contact, you gotta have all of the things. If you get a wastewater all the way, you're a pipe station. The town becomes liable for that.
To the shortage, child, it wouldn't be a vital. But the town pays for the negligence of the private pump.
No. Right.
There's a major issue. There's a major, if there's some big pumps wrong. Like one of those big pumps goes down because of the pipe leak. And then, flood the whole, whatever it's. And it comes out, oh, eight hundred thousand dollars. You think that that person's gonna pay you eight hundred thousand dollars?
And there should be insurance, there should be insurance involved.
Isn't it a health issue?
It is a health.
At this point, it's.
It's just a moment of enforcement.
One or, one you don't do it.
So if you.
Is everybody else's effect?
And I know you remember that. Two, two, well, no, well, two or three years ago, we asked those questions. And, and now they, they have, and what did you say, eighty-five percent? Sorry, Jeff, you're a little hard to see, you're there, yeah. It was, it was, it was your.
You're tall.
Yeah, that's what I meant, I couldn't see over you.
But if we have eighty-five to ninety percent that are compliant and ten to fifteen that are not, why aren't the ten to fifteen?
Guys, I just wanna make sure this is not a budget item, I know.
Well, it could be.
But we're taking money from them, correct?
I, I understand.
And if something happens, then they have to pay money out, and it may affect us and your budget and the money you're requesting of the four hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, right?
You're asking very specific questions that those people that own those pumps might wanna be here to answer also.
That's fair.
I will have a report.
Okay.
I'd just like to say one thing on sewer departments behalf. When I got hired for the town eight years ago, I got hired at the sewer department, and when I got hired, I was hired as a VACTA driver, cleaning crew of all the lines in town. Uh, as soon as I got hired, probably a month later, that was cut from former manager. That wasn't happening anymore. And to do the job right and to do the lines right, and Jeff, gosh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that truck needs to run five days a week from April until November, though it gets cold. Then you have to go out and inspect the lines after that, and you have to have two guys to do that, so for them to do all that correctly right now, they're short five people. Alright, so if you add those five people to do all this correctly, your salary's gonna go up, your, everything's gonna go up. So you can't do it with one person, you can't do it with two people, and if they take the people that they have there now, and they maintenance staff to go out and do it, now you have nobody around the plant, do the work around the plant. And you guys are all correct, maintenance needs to be done, and that is a hundred percent correct. I mean, I've seen lines that would make you sick to your stomach. It has to be done, it has to be done five days a week, and it has to be done nine months out of the year, but you don't have the staff. I just wanna back Jeff up on that because it's, it's very hard to get everything done, and I know people look at the department heads when things don't get done, and I, I understand that and I respect that. But you gotta look at the big picture too. You gotta have at least three people out there doing the lines, jetting the lines, because you gotta have two people running the truck. And at the other, at the other manhole, you have to have somebody watching traffic for them because it's a safety issue, regardless of how you look at it. And it's the same way that is inspecting the, the manholes. Uh, I did inspect them in those, you could do a ten a day, that's all you could do. And you gotta figure how many sewer lines and how many manholes are in this town. It's impossible. You gotta have the staff. That's all I wanna say.
I just have one other question. It was brought up by John, um, that the other, asking if the other communities pay for, like, our catastrophic failures. If they have an issue in their towns, are we responsible also, or they handle that on their own?
No, other commi- uh, communities have their own separate doctor trucks or organizations that will come out if there is a block up. Like Coventry has a, a company that they use when it's a block up in Coventry.
Saying if they have like a Water Street issue, like, there's, there's pumps in other communities, right?
Their lines are their problem.
Their lines are their problem. Okay, that's just asking because, uh, obviously, our, uh, rainy day fund has impacted, we gotta help them as well, so just asking. I just didn't know. Thank you.
Alright, no vote on here tonight, but I mean, I know council has discussion about rate increase. It's the second hearing, not to be brought before the council. Uh, when, next, next meeting?
Twenty-third? It's twenty, twenty-third.
About the sixteen? Though we had a meeting that night as well, but. You have a comments? Hearing none? What should we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, eyes have it. Anybody need a recess or anything?